नी प्रिय प्रबु नी सेवाकै आर्प्पिंचुको नीवे पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु अंधकार जिविता मुनकु वेलुगु तेच्छनु ताने अंधकार जिविता मुनकु वेलुगु तेच्छनु ताने नुतन मार्गमु कलिगे आवेलु द्वाराने नुतन मार्गमु कलिगे साजिव बलिगान आर्प्पिंचु नी जिविता मायनके साजिव बलिगान आर्प्पिंचु नी जिविता मायनके नी प्रिय प्रबु नी सेवाकै आर्प्पिंचुको नीवे पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु चप्पीपोति विगतमान्धु चप्पीपोति विगतमान्धु चप्पुदारिलिन नडसितिवे तन प्रेमास्थामे निन्नु कापडितेच्छनु तन प्रेमास्थामे निन्नु कापडितेच्छनु यंतय नस्मरिंचु निवो विन्तय नतन प्रेमन यंतय नस्मरिंचु निवो विन्तय नतन प्रेमन नी प्रिय प्रबु नी सेवाकै आर्प्पिंचुको नीवे पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु ओह प्रियुडा तलचितिवा नी जन्ममें पापमणी ओह प्रियुडा तलचितिवा नी जन्ममें पापमणी प्रभु तन रक्तमुतो नी पापमुक्षमिच्छे प्रभु तन रक्तमुतो नी पापमुक्षमिच्छे नीयुलमु आयनकालयमे नापकमु चुकुनुमो नीयुलमु आयनकालयमे नापकमु चुकुनुमो नी प्रिय प्रबु नी सेवाकै आर्प्पिंचुको नीवे पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु यवरत्तनी सेविंचेदरो फलमोंद दरांतमान्धु यवरत्तनी सेविंचेदरो फलमोंद दरांतमान्धु इतरुल कुलेनाट्टी आघणतनु निकिच्छे इतरुल कुलेनाट्टी आघणतनु निकिच्छे रूतागुड़ा वैकुनियाडु प्रभु पादसनिधिनी रूतागुड़ा वैकुनियाडु प्रभु पादसनिधिनी नी प्रिय प्रबु नी सेवाकै आर्प्पिंचुको नीवे पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु पावित्र प्रजलै नामीरु
Song number thirty one Song number thirty one Part sankhya upayogati ना सर्वमयना प्रभु आर्प्पिंचुको निकै
ना सर्वमयना प्रभु आर्प्पिंचुकुन्दु निकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै आत्मा प्राणादेहामु तालम पुलुकियालु आत्मा प्राणादेहामु तालम पुलुकियालु अन्नीयो निकोरके गैकुनुमो ओ एसुआ अन्नीयो निकोरके गैकुनुमो ओ एसुआ जीविंचा गोरिति निकोरके नीके महिमागणता जीविंचा गोरिति निकोरके नीके महिमागणता ना सर्वमयना प्रभु आर्प्पिंचुकुन्दु निकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै वेलिगिंचु ना जीवामु निम्पुमो नी प्रेमातो वेलिगिंचु ना जीवामु निम्पुमो नी प्रेमातो नी कृपतो नडिच्छेदालु मेन्नैला नी शक्तितो नी कृपतो नडिच्छेदालु मेन्नैला नी शक्तितो गणपरचा गोरिति नी नाममुनु नीके महिमागणता गणपरचा गोरिति नी नाममुनु नीके महिमागणता ना सर्वमयना प्रभु आर्प्पिंचुकुन्दु निकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै नाकालु चेतुलेल्ला नी सेवा कर्पिंतुनु नाकालु चेतुलेल्ला नी सेवा कर्पिंतुनु निन्नु स्तुतिंपानिम्मो निन्नु स्तुतिंपानिम्मो मनसारा प्रेमिंतु निनु प्रभुवा नीके महिमागणता मनसारा प्रेमिंतु निनु प्रभुवा नीके महिमागणता ना सर्वमयना प्रभु आर्प्पिंचुकुन्दु निकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै अंगिकारिंचु नेडे नी सेवाछे युटकै
Choice song please Fifty
Fifty seven
Tell, tell
English Telugu songs mention, song number fifty seven Telugu partalapustakalmunche, song number fifty seven This is part of our thirty six anniversary, the number forty three
कन्नुलनेती पैरुला चुडु कोयगलेरे वरु ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा कन्नीटितो वितिनचो कोयुदुहो हश्यमुतो कन्नीटितो वितिनचो कोयुदुहो हश्यमुतो आत्मया विजयमुतो कोनसागवानी प्रभुतो आत्मया विजयमुतो कोनसागवानी प्रभुतो ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा मोयामु विडचिनिवो एसु प्रभुम हत्तुकोनवा मोयामु विडचिनिवो एसु प्रभुम हत्तुकोनवा गिनयमु नादीलुड़वै सेविंतुवादं युड़वै गिनयमु नादीलुड़वै सेविंतुवादं युड़वै ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा विश्वास प्रार्थना छे चीनतनु तलगीपा विश्वास प्रार्थना छे चीनतनु तलगीपा जेलमुललो प्रभु महिमानिंदा सागेदवा फलमुंदा जेलमुललो प्रभु महिमानिंदा सागेदवा फलमुंदा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा मंदिरमु पडियुंडा मंदुड़वै निवुण्डी मंदिरमु पडियुंडा मंदुड़वै निवुण्डी सारंभी क्रुहमुललो संतोष समयमिदा सारंभी क्रुहमुललो संतोष समयमिदा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा कृष्टुराजु वेमच्छया कृष्टुराजु वेमच्छया दमकमयना दासुनिगा एदुकुन्दु हल्लेलुया दमकमयना दासुनिगा एदुर्कुन्दु हल्लेलुया ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा ओयुवकुड़ा ओयुवती तिनुचु त्रागुचु सुकिंतुवा
Brother side please Brother side
Sixteen English
Thwarga Jappeshala
Sixteen, English
One five
One six
One six
English
Song book, new one
Four Come ye that love the Lord
English song book one six, that's the one they are there English, English song book one six, sixteen Some English books are there Me Kichneet, I will tell you name
Yes, okay
Come ye that love the Lord Let your joys be known Join in a song with sweet accord Join in a song with sweet accord And thus surround the throne And thus surround the throne We are marching to Zion Beautiful, beautiful Zion We are marching upward to Zion The beautiful city of God Let those refuse to sing Who never knew of God But children of heavenly king Must speak their songs around We are marching to Zion Beautiful, beautiful Zion We are marching upward to Zion The beautiful city of God The hill of Zion is A thousand sacred streets Before we reach the heavenly field Before we reach the heavenly field Or walk the golden streets Or walk the golden streets We are marching to Zion Beautiful, beautiful Zion We are marching upward to Zion The beautiful city of God They shall see his face And never, never seen They from the rivers of his grace They from the rivers of his grace Drink and less pleasure sing Drink and less pleasure sing We are marching to Zion Beautiful, beautiful Zion We are marching upward to Zion The beautiful city of God Then let us songs abound And every tear be dry We are marching through Emmanuel's ground We are marching through Emmanuel's ground To fairer worlds and heart To fairer worlds and heart We are marching to Zion Beautiful, beautiful Zion We are marching upward to Zion The beautiful city of God
Song number thirty three Thirty six anniversary, song number thirty three Forty three part Charanam, March part, we will do One, two, three, four, five, six Nidhavu, Nissann, Nidhi
नी देवु नी सन्निधिनी कन्नाबडनु निवु सिद्रपडुमा नी देवु नी सन्निधिनी कन्नाबडनु निवु सिद्रपडुमा नी देवु नी सन्निधिनी नीयावर्णमुलो नी रुदयमुनु सात्रुप्ति गानु ननिम्मो नीयावर्णमुलो नी रुदयमुनु सात्रुप्ति गानु ननिम्मो आइते विटै नी पाटि देवु नी भूलो निखित्यच्छु निनु आइते विटै नी पाटि देवु नी भूलो निखित्यच्छु निनु नी देवु नी सन्निधिनी कन्नाबडनु निवु सिद्रपडुमा नी देवु नी सन्निधिनी नीयावर्ण जिविता मुन्नु पाटि रूनी कारमुनों नकुमा नीयावर्ण जिविता मुन्नु पाटि रूनी Runi karamunundakuma. Prabhuulu boli, nadachu konuma. Prabhuulu boli, nadachu konuma. Needevu, neesannidini. Kanabadano, nevusidhapaduma. Needevu, neesannidini. Prema santoshasamadhanam. Diga shantadayalutvamu. Prema santoshasamadhanam. Diga shantadayalutvamu. Manchitanamu satvika visvasamu. Manchitanamu satvika visvasamu. Needevu, neesannidini. Kanabadano, nevusidhapaduma. Needevu, neesannidini. Hallelujah, paatalu paad. Telappudu praburaakadakai. Hallelujah, paatalu paad. Telappudu praburaakadakai. Ullamunandu santasinchuchu. Paadmu prabunakuhallujah. Ullamunandu santasinchuchu. Paadmu prabunakuhallujah. Needevu, neesannidini. Kanabadano, nevusidhapaduma. Needevu, neesannidini.
I hope everybody has finished their food. It's over. That's good. That's nice because we have taken so much time in the morning. It's all two thirty, it's all over. So, I thank God for arranging to meet these young people. Yes, it's very, very good that Lord is making like that. Why it is like that? Why people are conducting youth meetings and they are so careful about youth? Can you say that? Every church, every church. Irrespective of any church, they really concentrate on youth. Why? Anybody? You don't hear true? You don't hear your worth? We know that.
There are some upcoming. They are the upcoming generation.
Yeah, that's good, upcoming generation. So what? No, you are in the right way. Right part, why don't you move again? Young ones? My youth fellows? Yes? Some of things about it. Yeah, she says something but I am not hearing. To preach the gospel. So you mean that other people not preach? Only youth will preach? Yes, you will, you have to preach, that's one thing, yes. You have to preach the gospel. Very essential and we are teaching you that, that's great. What she says, yeah, she is right in saying it. The youth has to be taken care of. And especially they have to concentrate on the word of God. Why? Because as she said, the elder ones are going out. Sometimes see today also, our dear brother Baburav. He is not able to speak now. Like that, it will happen or more people go off. Unless another, another belt or you can say another generation is built up. The church cannot grow. We have Sunday schools also, you know? Why? Because we are really educating the children also. After the youth, the Sunday school will come up. This is like a cycle. It starts from here, ends over there. But one thing. It starts from the big one, then comes to youth, then comes to Sunday school. So it goes on, on, then and then. If the, if it is going well, the church, they will not worry about it. It will surely run. Today I want to share with you one of the important things that you have to do. That's what when he asked the Lord, that was the thing he has given me. So, when we started, when we say that, when we started. We will say that, youth has to be like that. Yesterday for the other people, I was just speaking about how you have to pray in the early mornings. Anybody, anybody can share about it? Any youth can share, share what have been done? Pardon? He has, he has really caught it up and everybody should count them. Even though it's nine, two and a half hours. You can start with half an hour or even twenty minutes or even fifteen minutes. You can start with the Lord and go and speak with him. Do you understand what he said? You understand? What did you understand? Sorry for asking questions because then only you will come out. That's why you are doing it. So what is it he said? My brothers are not at all speaking. They are very calm. You can't be like this. You can't, you shouldn't be. You have to speak. This is the time that you speak. Yeah, please go ahead. What did he understand by that? He said two and a half hours. And just waste, waste the time, waking up early morning or even before that. So what, why we have to get, take up? What we are going to do? And what is the reason for it? That's what I told you. Yes, sir, please go ahead. Yeah, yeah, that's right. You are very right. You want to build up a relationship with the Lord, that's very nice. How did you do that? Suppose, go ahead, go ahead, please go ahead. Pardon?
By faith through God.
Yeah, that is, faith and word of God is right. But why you must be there with the Lord in the, not even early morning, before morning? I told you that, I have never seen, that is, I have not slept over in these hours, three to five. In the mornings. Because like you when you are sitting, somebody told me about this. And when he started working about it. I could find that more than me, Lord wants to do that. That you must understand. Lord is so pleased when you go to him, especially in the early mornings, that is three o'clock, four o'clock. Or even five o'clock. He is very much pleased because nobody goes to him then. Now, once again, I want to tell you about another hour also. You can understand when you read it. Psalm, fifth, Psalm five, Psalm number five, verse three. Psalm number five. Verse three. Yeah, that's okay. My voice shalt thou hear in the morning, O Lord. In the morning will I direct my prayer unto thee and will look up. Let's pray. Our loving heavenly Father. You are the one who was there, right from the eternity past to eternity future. You are going to make us also to be eternal people. That's why you came to this world. Died on the cross. Worried and restricted, now you ascended there, right unto the Father. Yes, Lord, as you are there in right up there in heaven. You like to speak to us, everyone of us. So let us understand you are speaking, oh master. That you are speaking from the word of God. So as we meditated these words. Kindly speak to us. So that we can understand what we have to do, why we have to do. So that we may be like you, oh master, as we have meditated in the morning. In first John, chapter four, verse seventeen, as it is said, we want to be as you are. So build, build these young children, oh master. Let us understand the word. Through the word, they may understand you. And come up in life. Not only in worldly matter, in spiritual matter also. We bind all the powers of darkness seen and unseen. We ask all this in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now you understand what is this? And saying of another prayer. This is very essential for the youth. Very essential for the youth. I just ask your question. The question is very bad, I think. Why, you know? When did you wake up in the morning, usual? When did you wake up? Some children say, really laugh because I, I can understand why they laugh. Because this, the question should not be asked to the youth, I think. So when did you wake up? None of you wake up, huh? Just tell me. Nobody is going to question you, why you wake up at that. Yes, children? Tell me, what is there? Nobody is going to say anything. You say the right time. Don't say because of this, I wake up at six o'clock. I wake up at five forty-five. I wake up at six ten. No, no, this, whenever you wake up. Seven, seven thirty, because the climate is so cool. You are not able to buy, yeah, that's right. I agree with you, yes. It is likely also that. Our young ones said the same thing. How would you? You wake up earlier or later? What, earlier? Oh, six o'clock, yeah, earlier you do, six o'clock. Is it regular or, for the sake of saying? That's very nice. Now, but other, other friends, they are not coming out? See, we come to the church to learn more. By learning more, we do more. By doing more, we really grow up more. That's why these meetings are concerned. So here, nobody is coming out, only one person, here one person, six o'clock, only seven. But I have seen people getting at even eight thirty. Some of you may be that, you know? Is it okay? Is it okay? Yeah, as you are laughing, I can understand that you are also the same thing. Yeah, let it be, let it be over. But here, what the Bible teachers will consider. I thought of saying about something, about Lord's other things, even the restricted power, I want to know that. But Lord said, this is the way that youth has to learn it, so you can speak on this, so I am speaking now. So here the musician, David the king, now he comes and tells the Lord. My voice shalt thou hear in the morning, O Lord. David says. Lord, hear my voice. In the early morning. It can be five thirty, it can be six, early morning. Before the, all the people just raise up. You raise up so that he can go and meet the Lord in the early hours. He is saying the reason also. In the morning, will I direct my prayer unto thee and look up. Because he has to look up. Only word you would be knowing about this, Hebrews, chapter twelve, verse one and two. That is, we have to look up unto him. Either in the morning or anywhere, anytime, we have to looking, we have to look up unto him. Please read. Loudly, please. Anybody who is reading, rightly please. Yeah, it is very cleanly said.
चाला स्पस्तमगा रायबड़न इकड़ा
We have to look up unto the Lord.
मनम एसु वायपुचुचुचु
Westus says that.
रण्डो वच्छनलो मानक रायबुन
Looking unto Jesus, the author and finisher of our faith.
विस्वासमु कुकरत्यो, दानिने कोनसागिंच्वाडन एसु वायपुचुचु
And the reason also, why it is to be, it is there, written there.
एन्दुक अन्नानकी कारणमु गोड अकडे रायबड़न
Who for the joy that was set before him, endured the cross, despising the shame, and he sat down at the right under the father.
आयना तनेदर्तन सबदन आनंदमु करके अमान्नमु नु रिलेक्स्पेटी, सिल्वनु सहिंची, देवु निसिम हासन व्यक्कुड़ि पासन असीन युनाय
See, you know that Lord Jesus Christ came and he went over, he came to the cross, he died over all the things. The reason, reason why he has done, it is written over here.
मरी मीर अंदरकी देल्सु एसुकृष्ट सुप्रवार लोकानकी वच्छटा, आयना चनिपोटा, सिल्वलो मरणिंचटा, समाधिश वेडित्रिले इच्छटा योवनी देसु, कनीकड़ कारणमु रायबड़न
It is said, for the joy that is set before him.
मन इदुत अन्सबड़ीन आनंदमु करकै
He is the author of faith, he is the author and finisher of faith.
आयना विस्वासमु कुकरत्यो, दानिनु कोनसागिंच्वाड
But his leftist glorian came as a man.
आयना तनमहिमनत्तर विच्चपेटी मानुवु गदिगोच्चाय
I know about the, I know that you know about the incarnation of Lord.
मीक देल्सु गदा, एसुकृष्ट सुप्रवार नरार, नरा, नवरा, नरा, नवरा, नरा अवतारम इत्तोच्छन
Yeah, the incarnation of Lord, why did he come like that?
एन्दुक देवु नरुन्यका अवतारम लच्छन
No, I don't understand, will you can me, tell me why he has come like that?
एन्दुक देवु शरीरधारिगा वच्चाडो, दान अर्धमु चप्पलर वरण
Somebody said and I don't know why, it can be, nobody is going to say you are wrong. All, all of you know, English you know, then why don't you speak in English?
एन्दुक शरीरधारिगा वच्च
Because I, I, sorry, I don't know Telugu.
मनक तेलुगु रादो
So if you know English, please do that. Yeah, tell me, what's it?
चपण्डिपोनी परले, योर चप्पले
What sir, you said something, you have stopped it.
Sister told like to forgive or since he came down.
Yeah, that's it, that's main, but, how did he come?
एन्दुक वच्चाड
Why did he come like that?
एन्दुक शरीरधारिगा लेक
We call it incarnation of Lord, why did that?
एन्दुक देवु शरीरधारिगा, शरीरम दाल्ची वच्चाडो, आ कारणमेंटी चपण्डी
If you are Christian, you must know that.
क्राइसु उड़गा प्रत्येकर्तो दिनी तेलिस्कवाली
You must know your Lord.
नी प्रभुनिकुर्चुनु तेलिस्कवाली
What is he, why he come, why he die, why he go, all this you must know that.
मी कन्नी तेल्याल, आयन योर, आयन एन्दुक वच्चाडो, एन्दुक चनिपयाडो, एन्दुक त्रिले इच्छाडो
So, can you tell me, why he came in incarnation? What is the incarnation, what do you mean by that?
शरीरधारिगा रावडमु, देवु शरीरमु दाल्चटमु, अंटे एन्टी चपण्डी
To be an example for us, in the body before us, in the same flesh we have before us, to set an example for us.
Did he come like you and me?
The spirit came but with the flesh
No, just I am asking, ah, yeah, please, you are saying something now, come please, please.
The spirit, in the flesh, he bore us.
He came in the flesh, did he come like you and me?
आयन शरीरधारिगा वच्चाडो, कानी नीवरण नावाले वच्चाड
That's the thing, that's the difference.
अदि चाला गप्पा वित्यासम
That they ask, Christian must know it.
क्राइसु उड़गा दिनीन मन देल्स
I don't, I think I am deviating from a point, but it is, this is very important, that's why Lord has brought it now.
इदि प्रामुख्यमणी, दिनी जप्तनामु, कुंचम मरी सब्जेक्टन्चे तोलिना पटकी
Yeah, you said that, you, you came it, come on, go ahead.
The spirit
Pardon?
I said, the spirit he was born, continued the hope of the spirit.
Yeah, that's right, which spirit?
Holy Spirit.
Never say Holy Spirit, say him as Lord Holy Spirit, yesterday I told you that.
निन्ना देन चप्पंगदा, परशुद्धात्म चप्पदु, परशुद्धात्म देवु
Never say Spirit, never say Holy Spirit, always say is Lord Holy Spirit, he is the third person of Trinity.
तृत्वमलो आना मुड़वाड़कावटी, परशुद्धात्म देवु
Suppose you are dying in college, yeah, you are studying in college or working?
सदकुंड
Pardon?
Working
You are in college, in, pardon?
Working
You are working, that's good, you are a boss, who is the boss?
It is not you.
Not you, let it be, what's his name? Pardon?
My little boss is a company manager.
No, 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 I am just, I have a point to ask, that's why I am asking that. What is his name, pardon?
Sybil
Sybil, that's good. So in the morning, when you meet Sybil, you say, hello Sybil, how are you, will you do that? I am just asking a question. You are, you have that, you are in college, you have a madam or any miss or master will be there. Suppose his name is said John, he will go, hello John, how are you, will you say that? What do you call them? Pardon? Sir. A man who is born like you and me.
नीवरण नावाले पुच्चनवालकी मन अंत गौरविंची सर अन्न बिलिस्तम
And you say him, sir.
मनम सरणी बोदिस्तम
Who is this Holy Spirit?
मरी परशुद्धात्म देवु योर
Who is he?
आयन योर
Who is he? Third person of the Trinity.
तृत्वमलो मुड़वाव
That is, you know the Trinity, you know that.
मी देल्सु गदा तृत्वमु
Lord the Father, Lord Jesus Christ and Lord Holy Spirit.
चन्ने देवु कुमारडेना क्रिसु मरी परशुद्ध
But according to belief, according to hope, he is only Lord.
मन विस्वासमु, मन एकनम्मकम इंचन, आयन वकडे
Anyhow, Lord Holy Spirit is coming, so never say Holy Spirit.
दैचेसी परशुद्धात्म अनि चप्पकडो
When you are not able to speak your own people, calling except, if it is a lady, you call her?
Madam
Madam, why do you call that? Madam, ma'am, now it's gone madam all over now, ma'am, short form of madam, it's all, it's good, that's okay. But you have to call it, you have to call it, like that only, why? You respect that particular person, yes, that's very nice, but, here we see, the creator of heaven and earth. Who is that? He is, who is this Lord Holy Spirit?
परशुद्धात्म देवु योर
You understand that? You agree with me, that he is the creator?
आयना सृष्टिकर्ता नी नातो पाटु मीर अंगिकरिस्तन
Can you recite a verse that he is the creator?
आयना सृष्टिकर्ता अन्ना माटा चुडकुन चप्पलर
Any word, any word, any word, you can do that.
योरन चप्पच
I say, Gospel according Saint John.
योन्स्वर्त
No, no need, yeah, because it is not our thing, just I want to brush away, because that thing is something more there. So, what we want to know is this.
मन इन्दिस्कवाल अंटे
Lord Holy Spirit, he has worked on Mary, and because of that, without any, 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 any male thing, he was born.
परशुद्धात्म देवु मरी एनु आवरिंचित द्वारा, एट्युवंटी पुरुष्यनियका कलेकलेकुंडने एसुकृष्ट सुप्रवारो कन्यकका जन्मिंच, कन्यकका गर्भमलो जन्मिंच
I hope somebody come and preach over on this incarnation.
मरी यका शरीरधारिगा रावडमणी, दानिकुचे योर बोदिंचरले तेलिदु
Because you and I must know, what is this, incarnation means, Lord did not come as you and me.
मरी यका शरीरधारिगा रावडमंचे, आयन नीवरण नावाले रालेदु
He was not born of a man and woman.
आयन श्री पुरुष्यलकु जन्मिंचलेदु
As brother said, he was born of Lord Holy Spirit.
सावधार चप्पिनाटुगा, एसुकृष्ट सुप्रवार, परशुद्धात्म देवनु द्वारा जन्मिंच
We don't know how he did it, we don't know, that's not written in the Bible.
अदेवन वाक्यमु रायबड़दि, एट्ला अनेद मनक तेलिर
We don't know that.
दानु विस्मनकाव्समु नले
But it is said, because of Lord Holy Spirit, she became.
मन रायबड़न माचन, परशुद्धात्म देवु आमे आवरिंचिन अन्नपुड
Why?
एन्दुक
If he would have born to a man and woman.
ओके वेला, परपाटना अस, चप्पकडो दगाने, ओके वेला श्री पुरुष्यलकानी जन्मिंचन वाडेत
He would be like you and me only.
नीवरण नावाले सामानिंच्च
Then how can he go and die on the cross, what is the use of dying on the cross?
ओके वेला सिल्वलो मरणिंचना कानी, प्रयोजनमेले दु
Here we say that he is Lord the Holy.
आयना परशुद्ध
He is the holy Lord.
आयना परशुद्ध देवु
And he was there in the world.
आयना लोकमु नपुड
He did not sin.
पापमु चैलेदु
Three things that is said about him, I was reciting it, did you note it?
मीक देल्सा, मोड़ विषयाले इस प्रवारकुच रायबड़न, आदि नेन ध्यानिंच
Here after, I would suggest you like this, my children.
एविदंगा नेच कवाननी मीक ब्रथनाड्कुंच्छन
Have a notebook.
ओका पुस्तकम बेटकुंडी
Have a pen or pencil.
पेन देस्कुंडी
Note it over.
रास्कुंडी
It is a bound duty that you have to do that.
योवनसिल तप्पकुंडा चेवल्सन पण
What you hear, when you go out, somebody is there to take it out.
मरी कड़बिंटर वाणे उत्तेन, आ, एविदंगा बाईटिकल्लता तो कुड़ उत्तर, अंत दंगलिंच
Who is there?
अड़ेवड
Pardon? Certain, you understand, yeah, that you know that, very good.
देल्सु
That you know that.
देल्सु
He is very, waiting for it, waiting for it.
मनकोरकु वाड़ वेचुन्नार अकड
Take away all the things that you heard.
All things that he has said.
Marie, iku dikamathamekado, ye ku dikainagani, chakaga hitting rali. Yavruvomari dasunu walking jeppeadu samaymenti, anni vaakal chakka garasqal.
Why I am saying this?
Enduk japtinarenti.
I was all like you then once.
Okapu neenuguda mevaleni, honestuniga unnan.
I was born again at the time of years only.
Ah, neenutirik janmishna pudu, evidanga, ee vice lunnan.
I was borning at the age of thirty-three.
Uppai moodu samanshna muna kapudu vice apud janmisha.
So I used to complain my lord. Complain my lord.
Ah, pravu kijapewa nee vidanga.
Why?
Prava, enduk.
So many people are born again even seven years, ten years, twenty years.
Chala mandi edu samanshna pudu, iruvai padhihan samanshna pudu rakshinsabadtnar.
So long time lord has made it, he has not done it all.
Marie, nakav, marie rakshinsabadna pudu anta samayam bittini endukunna.
Why, I could have heard more, more, more about you.
Marie, mevali, inkamundugane, tirigjanmishtekuva vinavani.
But anyhow lord made it.
Ede manappati kidevulu, marakshinsapunaid.
So what I would do?
Marie, neenenzialipudu?
Yeah, take a notebook.
Okustakandiskuni?
And write it.
Chakka garasqal.
What all that preacher says.
Marie, bodakudu jeppeyamatalani.
Without any exception, I will just make note.
Ah, tak, tapakunda daani manavrashkutra.
After that I go home.
Entikana tarata.
I repeat again.
Daani tirigimaanu dyanisali.
You know cow, what is thus? You know the cow.
Videlsukada, aavu enjessuni?
When she's lying down there, what she does?
Aavu bhaaga denesnataata, enjessuni?
What she does?
Enjessati.
My son, what does? What she does? Go on munching.
Namraveestavantti.
What is it? What she ate, she brings it up, again munch it, then put it, so that it will be digested well.
Evidanga, motamad sari, aika gaddianta, tinesnatata, marla tirigidantechkuni, milli milliga namultaavunti, neenamraveestavunti.
This is what I suggest you.
Ah, idi cheyavalsinigama, meemun vritmahadkunchina.
If you do that.
Meerucheshte.
Yes, you will, you will really understand what lord is.
Asal devudu, yavru eentianadi, meerk bhaaga vadelskunti.
You have to understand, it is there in your notebook, so that you can know it, what you have written, and when you have written, what you read it. It will speak of more things than the preacher.
Chirandi bodakudu jeppeena maatalakanna, meere apudite rasqun, entikaveli daani dyanistaro, inkekkuva devudu meek bodistad.
So we understand, if I am a Christian.
Okaveela neenu krisavunaithe.
I must know that my lord, born was born in incarnation.
Marie, naadevudu, naa prabhu, ee vidanga, shereedaariya, naradaavatamadchana, manaku tellskwal.
Because of that, only he died for me.
Daani korke, aana nakorukachanipayadu.
Only a holy person can die for me.
Kevanam parishuddede, nakorukachanipogaladu.
If any man dies for me, what's the use of it?
Okaveela, yedosamane, manavakti janmpate, daanavakshay prayuzhnamelil.
He is also sinner.
Aaya vudapapiye.
No use for me.
Nakketu venti lavamundadu.
But here, the lord himself came, in the incarnation, he lived really in this world without any sin.
Marie, eskrissu pravaru, shereedaariyavatsi, etu venti papumleekunda jivinsaid.
I just told you, what, what all the things last, yesterday I was saying that.
Neenadidinana jepptovachana, vishalanani?
Anybody noted?
Yavranar rasknana?
It's all, you must know that.
Manak tellskwal.
My dear children.
Apriyapillala.
I recommend, I recommend, I recommend.
Aichesiraasqumanivritmahadkunchina.
Yeah, I, in special meetings, I don't know, if they are giving or not, in some place, there, we had a special meeting, I just came from that only. In Parupadi south, south zone, there, they give a note, they give a pen also.
Kanukansalu, pratiyaka ku dikala, ekadate jarugataanteho, maranandarki okusakamu notebooku, maripenistavantaru, marigatidinana.
So what, so what is spoken, they are able to register there?
Marie, eede teakada devjanamartalatavachana, vannirasquntu, nankavakashmentati.
So here after, please do that.
Ah, ipanisana kanisunche.
Never come to the church without note and a pen.
Marie, pusakamu, penilakuna, daichesi, meeruraakadu mandiran.
I say, have the habit of registering.
Marie, rasqune alavatlu, manunkaligundam.
That's very essential for you.
Ali manak chala pramukhim.
Other, you will not remember.
Leipatek napakamundadu.
You are already loaded with that in curriculum.
Ah, marie, manam mindlo chala vishalunte, vaatithone nimpa paduntam.
I pity the children carrying so much load under bags.
School pillal jostavantka, valintarintega, balabagamatham chala padakunti.
So much you have to carry.
Evidanga, ennou, manam moskunaveltuntam.
Not only carry, you have to carry air also.
Kevanam bujammedagadi, gani, manamsala guda, anekamana vishalu, moskunaveltuntam.
So I plead you.
Aichesirvritmahadkunchina.
I don't recommend, I plead you.
Ah, meemun agni chetledu, kandichetledu.
Do you not understand the word plead?
Pleadane maatidelsukada, vedukunchina.
Even I can say, I beg you.
Ah, marie, adukkuntinana.
Why I am saying this?
Endukantinarenti.
I want you to be Lord Jesus Christ.
Esukrisupravaruvali, meeruguda marpu chandani korkunchina.
You want, I, we want, that you must know what Lord Jesus Christ is, and you have to become as he is.
Marie, esukrisupravaru, yavru meerudeskwal, aani ettivade unnadu, meeruvativali unnadani, maasha.
See, the glorious lord himself came down, why?
Chirandi mahimagaliina devudu, taane digavachinadu, endukku?
So that you and I may go back to our own place.
Nuvu neenu, mana sastalanike veladaniki.
What is our own place, I say?
Manaka swanta stalameeidi?
Am I right in saying that we are going back to our own place? Am I right in saying it?
Neenu ee maatal jeppundi, vastavamenana, mana sastalaki tirigivelali, annadamo vastavamenatappa.
Come on, open your mouth sir, whatever you are sitting.
Meere ee vidanga jostanade.
You must get involved.
Maatalani, sambashinchandi.
Come, come.
Tirigimanagurhali, manam velali, annadi vastavamenana jeppindi?
Not only today, anytime, especially in the youth meetings, we have to come up.
Marie, yavunasil ku dikalo, ipudegadu, yippudena gani, maatladandi, sambashinchandi, interactavandi.
Now tell me.
Ipudiyapand.
Yes, something, somebody said anything?
Milli meli gaptinar, gatti yapand.
Yes, please go ahead, what, what, you said something?
They are telling yes.
Yes means what? I don't understand.
Reenki yesantinare.
It can be right or it can be wrong.
Correcta, wronga jappand.
Okay, he came down because of you and me, so that we can know him more.
Ah, aaya manukorukachinaduka, bati, manam, aaya nagurichekkuva tellskwal.
That is mentioned, he was there on the joy, that was his written, joint that was set before him, endured the cross.
Mana edutonsabadina, anandamukorake, daanigun tellskwal.
See, his goal was to get you back.
Chirandi, devuniaka, pranalika, antamigol entanti, manantirigi, manastalanidiskavallali.
I said that we have go to our own place.
Indakajeppana, gada, mana swanta stalalki, manavellali?
How I said that?
Ee vidanga jeppeenu?
Yes, because we were from heaven only.
Manam ochsindekada, paralokapundane ochsaa.
In Adam, before sinning, we were in Adam.
Manamo, adamu, papam chesakumunde, manamandara guda, adamlo neenunnan.
If you read in chapter, Romans chapter five, you can understand it.
Meeku Romil rasna patrika javinapudu, chala chakka gardamavutun.
So we were there in glorious place.
Ah, mahimagaliina stalamlo, manam untavachan.
Until Adam sinned.
Adamu, papam chesentavaraku, anlonnan.
So heaven now is over.
Ah, ipudu, aakashamai pain?
Yeah, third chapter closes like this.
Ah, mudadhyamod, ee vidanga moginsabadindi.
Lord put a sword there, shining sword there, he blocked the way of heaven.
Marie, aika, marie, ah, ee deenutotak velakunda, devudu akkada, duutalenu, khatkajwalenu, akkabertavachan.
Once we were in Adam, there in glorious place.
Adamlo, okapudu, mahimagala, ah, stalamlo, manam untavachan.
Because of Adam, we are going to hell.
Ah, adamnu, bati, daanin swatantrizkuna.
That's why lord came down.
Anukarke, pravuchinaid.
He incarnated.
Aaya, shereedaariyavatsi.
Lived a fine life.
Aaya, ah, papumleekunda jivinsaid.
I told you that the things, if you can note it, please note it, because you need it.
Ah, daichesi, rasqunaiswal, rasqunandi, meekanta ausram.
Second content, in chapter five, verse twenty-one.
Kodnik rasnar, runda patrika, aido ochsaa, iruvayakutavachan.
Second content, in chapter five, verse twenty-one.
Korantil rasna, runda patrika, aido, iruvayakati.
Kindly read it.
Echadavandi, chivari vachsnamo?
I am going off my place.
Kadu, kadu, adikadu.
Five twenty-one, last verse. What is written there?
Papamiriganee, aaya, manakosamu, papamugachesin.
In English, it is said, he knew no sin.
Papamu erugadu, an English lo.
He knew no sin.
Aaya, papam erugadu.
Secondly.
Rundadiga?
Ah, first Peter, chapter two, verse twenty-two.
Madati patrika.
First Peter, chapter two, verse twenty-two.
Rundavachamila, rundavachanam, petrasamadatika, runderverandu. Aaya, papam cheyaleedu.
Who did no sin?
Papam cheyale.
He knew no sin, he did no sin.
Aaya, papam cheyale.
And first John, chapter three, verse five.
Yohan rasamadatika, moodu aidu.
First John, chapter three, verse five.
Andatini, yohan rasamadatika, patrika, moodu aidu, chadavandi?
Read it. Yeah, please read it.
Chadavandi, that is. Patrika, moodu aidu.
It was there, he had no sin.
Aaya, enndu papam emiuleedu.
He had, he knew no sin.
Papamirigadu.
He did no sin.
Papam cheyaleedu.
He had no sin.
Papam emiuleedu.
That is Lord Jesus Christ.
Adi esukrisupravaru jivitam.
That's the lord you worship.
Alanti devun aradisna.
That's the lord you are going on adoring.
Adi alanti devuni, manam, kunyadchina.
Why we ask you to adore him?
Endukku, pravuna aradinsmanikorukunnamu?
You just get what all he has, it's just imparted in you.
Aaya, mananu, aaya, eede tekaligunadu, avanne guda, manus panchkuntinaid.
Sorry to say again.
Manaksar japtinare.
Yesterday I was saying, why we have to worship?
Neenadidinana jepptovachani, endukku, pravuna aradinsali?
First of all, I ask, are you worshiping?
Motamad, amir pravuna aradinsachinara, nadigan?
In the Sundays, did you worship?
Ide, idekala sampravuna aradinsara, udayanmu?
This morning, did you worship?
Udaykala sampravu, idinam aradinsara.
Why sir? Thank you for saying right, but why?
Endukku, endukka aradinsa.
Why? It's not good to worship lord eh?
Pravuna aradinsitam, mansidina?
Why?
Endukku?
Why you are not worship?
Endukku, aradinsatledu, manamu?
Worship is the only thing that we are going to do now here, in eternity, that's the only thing we are going to do.
Chirandi, aradanantide, elantidante, eeaka, bhoomidunanta, kalamujesnamo, bhoomi vichivanatarata, kuda, nityatvamla guda, jarugavaidu, aradani.
Especially when I said, it started like this.
Ah, ee vidanga, armamavutavachan.
Deuteronomy, chapter four, verse seven.
Ditiopdis, kandam, nalgu edu.
Please tell me, what is it, why it is, why you are to worship?
Endukku, pravuna aradinsala, chadu jappandi?
Deuteronomy, chapter four, seven.
Chapter four.
Chapter four, verse seven.
Naalgu, edu, ditiopadeshka, namu, nalgu edu, chadu, jappandi, varana, chadavandi?
Hmm, in, I, I, in this, tell guy, I may have to understand it.
Chavzinapudu, nakardamavatassun, teligun.
Samiipamite, no?
Samiipam gunna, devudu.
That is, when you worship.
Manam aradiste.
What is said?
Akkaraibutma machenti?
What the Bible says.
Deenwakkenenjepthuni?
The lord is near you.
Devudu, manaku samiipam gunna.
I used to say like this.
Ee vidanga jeppevanne, neenu?
You know that lord is a so big a lord.
Mana devudi anta gopavada delisa?
Because in Isaiah, chapter six, 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 verse two, it is said, he is sitting on the throne, and leg is on the foot, his footstool is on earth.
Esakana, maravaya, rando, raibundi, aakashumnashimhasanamu, bhoomina, padapiitam.
So big is.
Anta gopavad.
So like that, his hand must be.
Aaya, chetugali, enta padakavundantai?
So in Revelation, chapter one, was eighteen or so, it is said, he holds five stars in his own hand. He holds five stars in his own hand.
Marie, devudana, swanta chetul, aido nakshatrmlu, patkunianta, chustam, parktanandamlo.
So big a lord.
Chala bedda devudu.
So what this verse says?
Ipudri, chadukunna maatal, emraibadundi?
When you worship.
Manam, aadiste.
You are in his lap.
Aaya, odilo, manam untam.
Do you know that? Or do you understand it? Why? What is that? You are in the lap of Lord Jesus Christ, do you understand what it is?
Devuniaka, odilo, aayaaka, aika, kaugitlama, manunatam, enta gopavisham, meek delisa?
Anybody can say about it?
Raangal chavani, chappagala.
Anybody can say about it, that you are in the lap of the lord? It is not written in the Bible, but I say that.
Ee, devunwakhamna, raivadi leedu, kani, neen chappagala, nadi?
Because I have learnt him, that's why I am saying that.
Neen nesknanaka, bati, neen chappagalano.
Why?
Endukku?
See, here after, you can't keep like this.
Kani, ikannusimiri, ee vidanga, maunanga, unnadang, villae.
Anybody who is coming, who is taking the youth meeting, you have to speak.
Ikannusim, yavru vachsi, youth meeting diskuna, meerumaatladali.
Then only you can learn more and more.
Appuday, meerekkuva, neeskunta.
Keeping quiet like this, nothing, it's not a, what I can say, a political meeting.
Marie, political meeting, alam, maunanga, undi, prasangaminaaniki.
There you go there, you hear that, then you clap and then go, it's all over.
Edana, aika, marie, yavru, naaykulu, prasangistnavudu, akkabini, chappadlagode, ochistam.
No, this is not like that.
Ee, aavidanga kadu.
It's a continuous process.
Ee, epudu, okerekanga, jarugasini.
It is continuous.
Ee, edatekaka, jarugasini.
You hear, learn more, hear, learn more, until the end, even to the death, you learn and more and more.
Marie, vinali, neeskwal, vinali, neeskwal, manam, sanipayantavaraku, neeskuntunene, unnali.
So now I said, start, again, I come to the point. Sorry, I want to speak one thing, but I am speaking another thing.
Chappalsin, okatankunanas, marie, devudichna talampul.
But it's very essential to know that.
Manam, tellskalsina, vishyalay.
Every Christian child must know that.
Pratikrisavudu, tellskalsina visham.
Because he is pure, because he is pure.
Ah, ah, he is new.
Pure, pure aree.
Because, aaya, parishuddudukavati.
He is holy.
Aaya, pavuddudukavati.
He is sanctified.
Aaya, neatibantudukavati.
Because of that.
Daani karancheta.
When I go, when I go with him, as he near to him.
Aaya, topatu, aaya, samiipamga, villnapudu.
What happens?
Enjarugundi?
His holiness comes to me.
Aaya, aika, parishuddetta, nalurs.
Slowly, slowly, slowly.
Milli milliga, milli milliga, jarigaprakriyayidu.
That's why we recommend you, that you have to meet him in the early morning.
Andike, jeppeydentiti, udaykala samulone, aaya, manukalskwal.
That's what is said here.
Adi, gada, kirtinakaranachinadu?
So what happens in the early morning?
Udaykala samu, enjarugundi?
Yeah, first I want to say that.
Motamad, chappalankuchinadu?
Job, chapter one, verse five.
Job, okati, aedu.
Job, chapter one, verse five.
Job, grandamo, madatijacam, aedu ochsnam.
Job, chapter one, verse five.
Chadavandana, job, okati, aedu.
Before going to this, sorry to say one more thing.
Ee, chappadankumundu, maraksar kshamaapunugorakuchinadu?
If I go on, I think you will not call me again.
Ah, ee vidanga, vilthantem, maraksar, meenavilvar.
Because I am going on asking questions, saying things, things.
Endukantey, prashnaleesmi, chempesnagani.
But what now, I, I, I started there?
Ipudu, ee, kada, ee, armamilshnavantti?
I was just seeing, when I said, Job, chapter one, verse five.
Marie, job, okati, aedu, jeppinapudu?
Some people are going on, where is Job?
Kontamaninka, job, ekadunadu, vatkeunadu, jostinar, vayavala.
One people say that he's dead and gone so long as Abraham.
Abraham, marie, anta pata, ah, marie, visvasanukuntinare.
But here, Joe, where is the book, Devu?
Job, pusakam ekadundi?
You know that he is a contemporary of Abraham, you know that?
Meeku delisa, Abraham, nevasinchina, aakalamlo, samakali kudina.
The, and the book is somewhat later, but actually is a contemporary of Abraham.
Vastavani, kipustakam, manaku, kirtanakumundunti, kani, idinoka, marie, charitrajiskunte, Abraham, unna, kalamlo, jarignasangatunal.
So don't misunderstand me.
Aidaichesita, tapugardenjeskutu.
You must know all the sixty-six books of the Bible.
Bible lon, arvayaru, pusakamileka, pairu, manak tellsindal.
You should not, when it is said that, you should not go and search where it is.
Marie, jeppinavantti, akkadi, kada, motam, firstnichi, lastvaru, veetikijoodadu.
Even suppose if you ask in the reverse also, you should be able to do that.
Ah, marie, manam, reverseka jeppeena, gani, meerchappagala, thiyagala.
If you know it, it's good better.
Teliskuntamansidi.
But if you don't know it.
Akvala, telekupate.
Don't be worried.
Ah, chintad, chintad.
You have a lot of time.
Inkachaala samayamunde.
So what you do then?
Meerenjala pudu?
Memorize it.
Marie, dyanisali, neeskwal.
Young people have the ability of memorizing.
Yavunasilaku, marie, neeskundanaki, bhattibattanaki, shakti samadhamuntundi?
If you ask me, or if you ask by Jaikar, we will not be able to remember more.
Marie, annaga, nekada, Jaikaramkunli, ipudu, marie, ah, vaakyamun, nemaravendi, dyanisnante, custom.
Our days are gone.
Ah, maika, vaisudhatpain.
But you are still young.
Kani, meerinkaya, yavunasilu.
Your brain is still young.
Me medastu, me, medastu, chala.
It can hold anything, it can hold anything.
Ipudu, eedena, neeskundanaki, meeku chala, avakashmentundi?
So what I say is this, you know how to know, what is the Bible, and what are the books in the Bible, where it is, how it was taken? When it is needed, you should be able to take it up and read it.
Ee vidanga, deenwakhamna, anni, arvayaru, pusakal, tellsindali, daani, aika, rutthantel, gudadesindali, epudanti, thima, pudu, ventana, thiyagala.
So in Job, chapter one, verse five.
Madatijacam, aedu ochsnamlo.
What Job was doing?
Jobenjessinandanti?
He was doing that, it is said, it is over there, and he rose up early in the morning, and offered burnt-off rings according number of them all.
Aranode, emna, lechi, varalokokkani, meetam, dhanabal, arpichachavachan.
That is, he was giving, giving sacrifice to the lord.
Udayamane, devunik, arpishtinam, balarpishtinaid.
That means he was worshiping the lord.
Daaninkobashil, jepparante, aradisnaid.
So when you pray in the early morning.
Udaykala samu, meerpradinsapudu?
You will do that.
Adi meerchayali.
What you will do?
Meerenjali?
You will be know how to worship this great god.
Ee, anta gopadevuni, ee vidanga, aradinsalam, mananeskwal.
So when you wake up early morning and pray to the lord.
Udayanane, lechi, pravuku, pradinsapudu?
You can be sure that you will be a worshipper.
Ah, okavisam, gnaapetkwal, meeraradikulay, unnali.
Again ask you, why you have to be a worshipper?
Maraksaraduthnan, endukaradinsali?
Why?
Endukku?
Because this is the start over here.
Endukantey, ikkada, armamavutundi?
You know that eternity, we are going to do that only.
Mejeppana, gada, nityatvamla, kuda, manaradinsedi?
Know the work everywhere.
Akkada, verepane, mundadu?
Everything lord does, it lord is giving also.
Devudan, anni, siddaparisham, manakichachan.
So you must understand that we are going to be there when we worship.
Manamo, akkada, paralokarasham, unnapudu, kuda, aradistam, mana, vishyamutelskwal.
Secondly.
Rundadiga?
When you, when you wake up and pray in the morning.
Udayanane, lechi, pradinsapudu?
Eva, Eva sins will be shown.
Ah, meaka, pradinagurich, meerjagarta, tellskunidu?
That is very essential, yeah.
Chala pramukhimainidi.
Because I think I do everything all right.
Ah, neenankuntanu, anta, neenu, bhaagane, jeshan, neemarkuntanu?
I have a friend like this.
Nakavsnaitudunaid.
I have never sinned.
Neenepudu papumjeleedu.
How can you say that I am sinning?
Ee vidanga, neenu papumjeshanajepthav?
But he is the worst sinner.
Enta ghoremane, papuva.
He will be going on doing things.
Anekana, chedakarid.
But he says that I have not sinned.
Kani, antadu, gada, neenapapamejeleedu?
But here, when you go to the lord in the morning, early morning.
Kani, udaykala samu, manaprabu, edakalapudu?
Lord will show you what you are.
Manamo, ee, mayunam, adevudjupistad.
If you want to know who you are.
Nu, yavru, tellskwalankunti?
Your mommy, your dad, anybody can, cannot tell that who you are.
Nu, yavruva, chappadanki, me talidandal, guda, saripur.
Because they don't understand your mind.
Endukantey, meaka, talampulu, uhalu, varikudadang.
But the lord knows your mind.[1229.68]
Kani, me uhalu devanika dels.
A small thought of you will be, he will be knowing.
Me talampulalakalke, chinnu uha gada devanika dels.
Whatever she wanted to do, he knows it.
Miru ee michayala ankuchinaru gada pravu dels.
That's why I said you have to go to the Lord in the early morning, so that he can speak to your mind.
Andike jappinam, udhe kaala samay lo, me pravuyadakunnapudu, aina mitma maatlaad.
At that time, he shows your sin also.
Aina, aasamayamlo, miru chesi, pratipapum jupisthaad.
I was telling that, make a given, be with him at three o'clock or four o'clock, I have just said, I have tried it also.
Meetha cheppan gada, moodu, naalgaidu, ee pranthamlo, mar udhe aanleeshan jepan, neeguda nee chesstunna.
In that house, what is dying?
Aasamayamlo, ee, ee chalipothundi.
What is he doing?
Manen jestamo?
He just says what all I have done, and what all I have not done, what I have sinned, he just clearly says that.
Aina spastamga mantajupisthaadu, manamu, ee meen chesstamo, ee michayalo, ee me manamu chayleemo, andi jupisthaad.
I must know how bad I am.
Neen enta durmankudano, adi neen telskvali.
I think I am so good.
Adi telskukunapudu, manunkutam, neen chala mansiva.
Nobody knows about my character.
Naeyoka vekchittamgurichu, yavari delidu.
They don't know what I am doing.
Neen ee jessunana, vada yavari delidu.
Especially in this young age, I can understand so many things that I see that.
Anekamena visya, pramukhyamga, yavana kaala jeetamlo jargave shash.
If you want to escape of all these things.
Vaat annitilundi tapinskvalankunte.
You have to go to the Lord in the early morning.
Udhe kaala samay lo, pravuyadak velali.
Go to him.
Pravuyadak veldu.
Then he will take you up.
Apudu, aina neenu paikle evanat.
Like a father, he takes a son or daughter.
Tandritan, kumarne, ee videnga paikle evanatukuntadu.
He will teach you, teach you, teach you what you have to do.
Manamu ee jessunamo, daanene devu, manak neerpisthaad.
Try that.
Okshar prayathan chen.
We just recommend you try that.
Okshar chen, neen brathnilad kutshna.
You have to wake up early morning.
Udayaanne miru legali.
Somebody says six o'clock, you are waking up.
Kontamanjeppara, aargantlanjeppara.
Very happy to do that.
Chala santoshamindaniki.
If you can move, five thirty or five, it's good also.
Konjamundu, aidenara, aiduklesina, inka mansidi.
Even six o'clock is okay.
Aargatla gada parledu.
Because nobody wakes over that time.
Aasamayamlo, inka yavaru vada legaru.
So when you wake up.
Manu leesnapudu.
Go to the Lord.
Pravuyadak velal.
In the early morning, go to the Lord.
Udayaanne pravuyadak velal.
He will show your sin.
Aina, mar papum jupisthaad.
Joshua.
Yoishva gandham.
Joshua, book of Joshua, chapter seven, verse sixteen.
Eedu padihedu.
Joshua, chapter seven, verse sixteen.
Yoishva gandhamu, eedu padihedu. Pissmal jadandi, eedu padihedu. Brothers le, yoishadatle, eedu padihedu.
Joshua's?
Yoishva gandhamu.
Seven.
Eedu.
Sixteen.
Padahara otsna.
Seven sixteen. Do you know what is, if you have read the Bible, you would understand what is the circumstances?
Mar ippudu sadhuvadina, vachinam ardhangavaanate, daan mundu venikal, antamik telsindali.
Can you tell me that?
Yavana cheppagalarai, deen gurichu raivadna sangatuna?
Anybody, anybody, anybody reading the Bible, knows the Bible. Can you explain what it is?
Ippudu sadhukina vachinanki, daan vrittantham, daan ven, mundu venikal charithrae pann. Adi endukka raivadina sangatana?
Yes, yes. What is the circumstances?
Akada, sangatana ee jargina, akada, daan, jarg, vachin raivadna karna venti. Daan mundu ee jarginda, adanta.
What is, why, why Lord is saying this?
Enduku, imatalo pravu akar raansina?
Yes, anybody knowing that, you know the book of Joshua?
Yoishva pustakam.
You have read the Bible?
Bible jadavara, telskada?
Pardon? Israel? Lost? What lost? Lost God? Oh, lost the war, yes, yes, you are right, you are right, lost the war, that is, they were defeated by Ai.
Ai patnamidela napudu, odu pappatta.
Yes, you are right, that's right.
Karate.
Why?
Enduku?
Pardon? Yes, brah?
Cheppan, karate.
Akkan, what did he do?
Ee jessad akkanu?
What did he do? Pardon, you are only speaking, my dear ones are not talking, you know?
Meethaval andar gada jessis.
Let them also do that, you know that, that's very good, that's good of you, go ahead like that, how about you, my children?
Miru gada telsagan cheppara, nagels.
Here also, somebody was opening, and now you are not doing?
Cheppande.
Why? Brah was saying right, they were defeated, Israel had defeated.
Israelu brajal odu payar gada?
Defeated to Ai, that country called Ai.
Aina pachkam.
A.I. Yeah, that's good, why?
Enduku, karna.
That's the thing, that's the thing, why?
Karna venti, endukku odu payar?
Pardon? One office of what, not one of his? Akkan.
Tell his name.
Akkan took it. He took something, yes, what did he do? He just digged it in a stand, put it down, finished.
Akkanu, mar dhongathanan jessan jessanante, tanagudaramlo, daanithrovi, daachi pettaad.
Now I am asking, is this wrong?
Mar ippu prashnante, ala chedam tappa.
He is done, done in the battle only.
Mar yuddhamlo, mar sammputtiskunade gada?
Is it wrong to take the people that they have gone, is, is bad to take it out?
Mar doopudu sammu diiskudam tappa, tapukaadu gada?
Yeah, you are saying something?
Cheppande.
What sir, you want to say something?
Cheppan, bhai padthan, gattu kappu, yeah.
Yeah, yeah? What's that? Pardon? How do you say it's cursed things, I don't say it's cursed things, he bought it and he had it, now he is defeated, so Akkan has taken it, how do you say it's a cursed thing? You are saying the right thing, but I want to know, others also know why it is.
Enduku, adi shapakrastamainadi?
Why you say it's a curse?
Enduku, adi shapakrastamainadi? Cheppitamainadi, enduku?
Pardon? That's good, that's it.
Karate.
Lord really said, before they are going to Ai, what they are, Israel had to do, they have to destroy all things.
Mar devu, varad, kachitamga cheppad, aegmeeda pachnum, velakumundu, samastamunu, miru nirmulanjayali.
But this man, did not obey Lord.
Ee matanu, vidhe jupinsa.
He stole the things.
Dhongathanan jessad.
Kept it in, underneath the, his tent.
Gudaramlo, daachi pettaad.
So what is happening now?
Ippu ee jargindi?
Israel were defeated.
Israelu odu payar.
They, they really conquered Jericho, a bigger country, bigger place.
Chedan, Jericho, ento petha mahapatnamu, daanene valu, odiincharu.
But what is happening now?
Kani, ippu ee jargindi?
They are defeated.
Odu payar.
That's why this verse.
Andike, ee vachinam ikka raivad.
What is the verse saying?
Vachinameen japtundi?
Verse sixteen.
Padahara otsna.
That is seven, seven sixteen.
Yoishva ya.
So Joshua rose up early in the morning and brought Israel by their tribes, and the tribe Judah was taken.
Kaavati yoishva, udheamune leesi, israelu, varigotramu, varsa betti, darugrapinchnapudu, juda gotram pattabadenu.
Yeah, by tribe, by tribe they called.
Var gotram, embadigotram, odkarupil sad.
Lord appointed Judah.
Judanadevu, mar pattabadna jessad.
Then Judah means, then they, they say about Carmi. Carmi, C.A.R.M.I. Carmi. His father, Akkan's father.
Akkanu, kathandri payar, Carmi, a, a, athanu pattabadadu.
So his son Akkan.
Aina kumaru, akkanu.
He is detected now.
Ippudu, athanu pattabadadu.
And when he is asked.
Adikinapudu.
He says that he has sinned.
Neenu papum jessanenappukunadu.
Yeah, now, only when Joshua woke up in the early morning, and went to the Lord, asked the Lord what he had to, Lord showed all these things.
Yoishva, udheamune leesi, pravu degare veli, adikinappude, devu, daaniki, bailiparchina.
That's why we ask you to wake up in the early morning.
Andike, udhe kaalamlo levalan cheppadan ki, karna venti.
Why you want, why you want to emphasize it?
Enduku, deen noke jappinamante?
This is the reason.
Idi karna mo.
What all you have done, without knowing your father, mother, anybody, thinking that you are not turned to anybody, Lord will say, my son, my daughter, you have done it.
Mar, mar talidandalu teleekunda, mar snaitulukadileekunda, ee daita, manu tapulu, papum jessintamo, udhe kaala samaylo, pravuyadak otsnapudu, na kumaru, na kumaru, idino jessavu.
That's why I had to go.
Andike, pravuyadak velal.
Sometimes we also don't know what we have done.
Konukonasaalu, manamu ee jessamo, manak deliyad.
That also he will reveal.
Adi gada pravujupisthaad.
Try that.
Chen, cheshtu.
Try that, because something I can say that, I can say, in our place, we call one sweet, Krishna sweets, they have a maishur park, that big one, like big one, you just put it in your mouth, it melts there, it's all sweet, it melts there.
Mar, ma sthalamlo, Krishna sweets, sanuntan, akada, maishur park, chala famous, adi, teeskuni, notla, ee videnga petkutain, karibhotundi.
It is more than that.
Daanikante, sreystamainadi.
The word of God is more than that.
Deen vaakhyam, daanikante, noritlu, mansi.
When you go to the Lord, it is more than that.
Pravuyadak velanapudu, adi ento gopadi.
Lord, all his folded arms, he is coming, extended arms, he is coming and saying, my son, I want to hug you.
Prilara, mar devu, taaneka, runda hastamlu chaachi, na kumaru, na, nanu kaugalinskuman, jeppe devu japtai.
Even though you have done some wrong.
Nu tapu jessinapatici, kuda?
Especially against him also.
Aina ku virodanga jessinapatici, kuda?
Lord doesn't do it.
Devu, eppudu vichpetti.
You are going there, Lord, I have sinned, that you are going to say that.
Manu vodcheppadeen, pravu, papum jessanu.
So, when you go to him, he will show what you have done.
Manu mayudukpilnapudu, manu ee jessamo, manu jupisthaad.
The next point is, what I want more is, Song of Solomon, chapter seven, verse twelve.
Paramagithamlo, edavacham, panandavcham.
Song of Solomon.
Paramagithamlo.
Song of Solomon, chapter seven, verse twelve.
Edavacham, panandavcham.
Seven twelve, somebody can read it?
Yavana sadhugalaru?
Let us get up early to the vineyards, let us see if the wine flourish, whether tender grape appear, and the pomegranate is but forth, there will I give my loves. Here, what we understand is word.
Ee vachinam, sadhutada, araman, ee mar damavutundi?
Yesterday I was speaking, no, Lord is reminding me, yesterday I was speaking on this.
Ah, deen gurichu, ninadina, naap, maatlaadto vachin, prabunak, naapum jessunai.
About the grapes?
Draksha, rasamgurichu maatad.
About the plant, plants and the grapes?
Mar, yaaka, draksha vanamlo, draksha chettlu, totalgurichu maatad.
Do you remember?
Naapum namiku?
Pardon? Yeah, you are right, any. Yeah, yeah, which is, what is really spoiling the plant?
Ee part jessandi?
Little foxes.
Little foxes.
Yeah, that's right, you are right, that's how you have to remember what is going there.
Ee videnga, manu, naapbetkvali.
Because little fox is really a dangerous one.
Ee kaka, guntanakkalu, chala bainkaramainadi?
Little fox is really dangerous, that's what yesterday I told, I don't repeat again.
Neen cheppan gavati, marla daanee cheppanu.
Here he says.
Ikka jarai, ikka raivad.
Rise, rise up early in the vineyard.
Pendala kadanleesi, draksha vanakupodam.
Why?
Enduku?
Whether the tender grape appear and the pomegranate but forth.
Mar, drakshaalu, chigirinsinaeledu, daanima chettlu, pothaboosinaeledu.
So then what will you do?
Natartha?
There I will give thee my loves.
Ah, na prema suchanlik chupedan.
That is, this little fox really hinders my love to my Lord.
Chedan, na prema, prabu chupinsadaniki, ee kaka guntanakkalu, aatanka barstina.
As brother has said, the little fox, what, what they do?
Aika guntanakkal ee jessai.
Go and bite the, all the roots of the grapes.
Aika draksha chettu, kinniransi, veerlani, gada, ave, thini vesta.
So when the root is out.
Veerlanta, baitikujessinapudu.
Whatever big the plant is.
Aika, mokka, enta pethagaina patici.
It will really, surely, surely, it will grow.
Adi ventane, velakpana, konthantinamayata, endu potun.
That shows that you don't love the people.
Daan ardamenchante, miru, preminchattledu, anarath.
Here it is said, if you are going, going to wake up in the early morning.
Ikka raivadindi, pendala kadanleesi, manu vilnapudu.
And see that what you have done.
Manamu chesneede, akada, chustai.
And if you want to change also.
Manamu, daanini, marchalankunapudu.
Lord is there to change it?
Devu, edani, marstadu.
Is there to change it?
Devu, marchinak, akadunadu.
And he will really give his power, so that he may not sin.
Manamu, papum chakekunanatlu, devu, taana shakti manaki sthaad.
One more thing.
Enga visyam?
Psalm thirty, verse five.
Muppai keethana, aidavcham.
Psalm was, thirty, verse five.
Muppayo keethana, aidavcham.
Psalm thirty, verse five, yeah.
Muppai keethana, aidavcham.
Muppadi keethana, chapter five, sorry, verse five. For his anger endured but for a moment, in his favor his life, weeping may endure for a night, but joy come out in the morning. Now you understand why you have to wake up in the morning?
Enduku, udhe aanne, legalo, ardamainamikupudu?
He says that, the anger of the Lord is there.
Akada, devani, koopamundian jepthanadu?
Maybe it is for a moment.
Kani, konjamseep markavuntundi?
But in the night, he is not, he is going to endure that.
Kani, raatri kaala samaylo, aina, daan sainchavadunchnai.
But it is said.
Ikka raivadindi?
Joy come out in the morning.
Udheamune, santoshamakaligunna.
So if you want joy.
Prilara, neeku udheamun, ah, neeku santoshamakalante.
If you want to be happy the whole day.
Dinamanta, gada, anandanga jeetinsanante.
If you want to do everything in the Lord.
Pratthi okkati, prabunandu, chayalankunapudu?
You want to do the will of the Lord.
Devu, chittam jarginchalaankunapudu?
Wake up in the morning.
Udhe aanle velali.
It is very essential.
Chala pramukhyam.
Yeah, this very sad, if you want to have joy the whole day, it is essential that you go and meet your Lord, meet your father, meet your hugger, ask him in the early morning, so that he will hug you and show you how you have to behave on the particular day.
Aka dinamandu, santoshamga, dinamantam, manu, gadpannankunapudu, udhe aanle leesi, manu, pravu degarekunnapudu, aina, manu, vincharu, atthamadhan, gada, manu, kaugalinskuntadu, adinamantatikoruku, manaku, nadipimpistadu, adinamanta, gada, ento santoshanga, anandanga, unchindi.
So what is, what, why we have to wake up in the morning?
Enduku, udhe aanle levali?
So that we may have joy.
Manamu santoshamakaligundaga.
Everybody works for joy only.
Pratthi okkarmu, anandanga, santoshanga, undanani, panjistha.
You know, home also, we want other people, especially father and mother, love you, so that you may be in joy.
Manu intlo, gada, talidandalu, manamu, santoshanga, undanani, gada, var, preminjesebi.
Sometimes it will be like that.
Konukonasaalu, ee videnga, unchindi.
You know Rebecca?
Rebecca?
Isaac's wife.
Ah, mar, isaaku, bariyav.
You know her?
Telskada, mikripka?
What is the thing that she has done?
Ami jessinapanente?
She loved Jacob but hated.
Yaakovunu preminjshinigani?
Hated? Hated? Esau.
Esau and veshins.
It cannot be like that.
Avidanukudade?
In the family, it should not be like that.
Kutummala, avidanukudade.
Father and mother have to love you.
Talidandalu, me preminjsh.
Both have to, and you have to reciprocate.
Ah, ee idharu, mar, idharu, parasparanga preminjshkata.
So we, the joy, that means we always there, you have to go to the Lord in the early morning.
Andike, udhe kaala samaylo, pravuyadakunnapudu, manamu, eppudu santoshanga.
One more thing and close.
Inkoka visyon cheppamukistha.
Yeah. One forty-three, Psalm one forty-three, verse eight.
Notana lavayam, moode keethana, envidavcham.
Psalm one forty-three.
Notana lavayam, moodu.
One forty-three, verse eight.
Envidavcham, notana lavayam, moode envidi.
So what is, what do you understand by this verse?
Ee vachinam, bati, manu, ee mar damavutunti?
Somebody can say that?
Yavana cheppagalarai?
What, what is meaning by that word?
Ee vachinam, ee kaka, ardamu, saramshamenti.
Come here, hear my thy kindness in the morning.
Udheamuna, ni krupa varthanu, nak vimpumpumu.
Yes, Lord is speaking to you, that he wants you to read the Bible.
Deenu vaakhyamu, sadhavani, devu, manaku, maatlaad.
It is very essential.
Chala pramukhyam.
You have to read the word of God.
Deenu vaakhyamuno, sadhavali.
You heard more, more messages on word of God, so I don't want to make it now.
Miru, ekku, varthamaanu, vinthaar kaavati, ekku, gamik cheppatleidu.
But in order that you may more, 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 you may know the more of word of God, you have to go in the morning and read it.
Mar, devnu vaakhyamun, ekkoga, nu telskvalankunapudu, udheamune leesi, sadhavadamu, alavatkaligundali.
Nowadays, people are accustomed to read in the, in the late night, go up to even one o'clock or two o'clock, and then sleep.
Mar, ee, ee, naati, dinalo, prajal, etla, alavatupadaranate, raatri, mar, chala aloshchangavunnapudu, sadhavadamu, padukuntara, inkacha, sadhavaram.
But in our younger days, our father and mother don't allow us, do not allow us to be awake more than eleven o'clock.
Mar, ma dinalo, ma talidandalu, raatri, padakunda, daatna, taratha, mar, makku, mailikavu, udanaki, permission unadu.
Instead, they wake up at four o'clock.
Kani, udhe aanne, naalgantak leepivar.
Why?
Enduku?
When you study in the morning, early morning, four o'clock.
Udheamun, naalgantak lees, sadhivinapudu?
What do you study?
Manu ee jessadhivina.
It is registered there in the brain.
Manai, kaka, manuslo, adi, avidanga, achukud.
That's why father says that.
Andike, talidandalu, udhe aanle leptad.
So what, it is written over here?
Ikka raivadma, machentante?
In the early morning, go and be with the word of God.
Udheamune leesi, nu, aina, vaakhyamun, sadhavamu.
I can go on down, I can say that, it is already five thirty.
Ippadka, aidenara, ipaneni, cheppalan, kutichapuntavilas.
I will, I will stop over here.
Ikkada, aapi vestan.
But one thing.
Kano ka visyam.
Will you, will you, will you, from tomorrow, wake up early morning, go to the Lord and pray?
Mar, miru, udhe karnam, nishreepan, nish, udheamune leesnata, pravuyadaku, veli, pradhistara.
Because that is the only, that thing is going to help you bring up.
Idhaka visyamu, chaita dharaane, manamu, manu jeetamlo, edugutamu.
That will make you grow.
Adi, manamu, paike, edugulagana jessi.
It is very essential.
Idi chala, mar, pramukhyamainadi?
Yes, don't mind that he is saying what, what all you have done.
Ah, mar, aina, miru, jessinavani, gada, japtaru, anna, visyanu, kutipattipuka, kaligundu.
He is not going to punish you.
Aina, daanu, kutchumin, sikshinchakal.
He is the Lord whose mercy, that's what in the morning we heard.
Udhe aanle justochingana, ento, dayaalattam, kanikaran kaligunavad.
He is a lot of compassion, he is a lot of mercy.
Aina, dayagaligunavadu, kanikaram kaligunavad.
So acknowledge him, acknowledge him, what you have done.
Manamu, ee jessamo, daanene, manu, gurtairgal.
That too in the early morning.
Adi gada, udhe kaala samayam.
And ask him to really, really wake you up that time, and so that you can read over, when you read it, you will, that will be registered, and you will become, why you are asking all these things, you have to become as he is.
Mar, e, ee, enduku, chayalani, korukuchinamante, udhe kaala samaylo ne, miru, leesi, sadhutada dhvara, avani, gada, me, mindlo, chakkaga, undtai, nantaratha, aina, etti vade unadu, atti varumai, manu, mundulagana, appudu, devu, saayin jesthaad.
One more thing I wanted you.
Inkoka visyon cheppalan kutshna.
If you know that is better.
Meeku telsi, chala mansidi.
You know all the sixty-six books?
Aravayaaru pustakamlu, peerudelsamiku?
It's good.
Mansidi.
But I find that some people are just turning the pages because they don't know where it is.
Mar, a pustakam, ekadundo, teleedukaavati, inkka, vivalo, tipthavunadu, amen, chusana, gamrinchana.
As I said, don't be worried.
Chinti chadu, bhai padthu.
You can, now you can start.
Ippudena, me neechkuv.
Learn the sixty-six books thoroughly.
Aravayaaru pustakamlu, ne, mar, neechkundan.
That is essential for you.
Adi, manaku, chala pramukhyam.
And when you do that.
Adi jessinapudu.
You will be able to read what the Lord wants said.
Devu, manaku, ee michcheppanankuchinadu, adi, manaku, bodista.
So once again, thank you for hearing me patiently.
Mar, chala opikaga, me, vinndanuku, me, andarke, enta, vandanalu?
And hereafter, I hope.
Mar, ikkanunse, ne, nirksinchinshinantati?
You will, for any meeting, you will come with a notebook and a pen, so that what is there, you will register.
Mar, ikkanunse, miru, pratthi, meetingki, pustakamu, pennidetchkani, rasukuntara, ne, namuchana.
So thank you.
Me, andarke, vandanalu.
Pradhun jesskuntavu, preyavaltanray. Magarama, inakupadavai, intavarku, mira, magthora, indexham, gavakapadi. Meekka vaakhyam, meekka pradhane, atna gurichyo. Udhe kaala samayam, meetho, garbavallani, mar, eku, saari, gnabakam, chesnada, bharanami, gavandana, chalistram. Ma shiri, rasukhalabati, ma talidandalu, preyamanabati, mar, anekasalu, me, aika, preyamanu, durvane, enga, jesse, twenty, stithalavudhram. Pravam, ma shiri, rani, ma, kadiplavun, skunnavaramai, udhe aanne, me, sano, mokkari, chesi, pradhinci, me, vaakhyamun, sadhavi, neechkvala, valsina, partam, neechkani, devam, vudyalono, vudhyogamolono, me, ma, keshina, bhadhethalo, velugubidala, vala, jeetishtanaki, sheshtamena, jeetam, kaliguntranki, aasirvadame, kaliguntranki, saayin, chayavasiddha, akhorsunam, mar, eku, saari, intavargu, yavasthalo, me, ishnu, to, sahong, korugvandanalu, va, ento, o, mita, vaakhyam, vinar, pravav, vinaname, kaakula, vinanada, prakaranu, var, notshkutu, saayin, chayemo, saayin, kaala, bu, kude, gakko, me, ma, veshida, basimo, kurdagadav, chalistu, esunavana, pradhinci, deenavastava, edikonsa, naamthanray, amen. Una prabhane, esukrista, eka, krupa, tandeyana, devane, eka, prema, pasudhatma, gusavasmo, manakun, sagla, pasudhalakun, eppudunu, ellapadunu, sadhakalamu, thoda, yunagakha, amen. That is, ikna, bedkoni. Ippude, vachin, shubhavat, jeppadu, andarke, tea, sarujay, varthaadi, miranak, chidikelti, milte, daagitara, you can relax, thank you very much.